And then we will go ahead and move on to item number four on our agenda, announcements and presentations. First item is to receive an update on COVID-19 response efforts. I'll turn it over, Jennifer Diano's please.
Good evening Mayor, members of the city council, members of the public. We're just pulling up the presentation right now. My name is Jennifer Diano's. I am the Assistant to the City Manager, and I'm here this evening representing the Emergency Operations Center Public Information Team. We will go over the Blueprint for a Safer Economy, our local statistics, and modifications to city services. A reminder to stay connected, and as always, I'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation. So today was a big day for a change in our status for the Blueprint for a Safer Economy. We did move to the yellow tier that was announced by the state earlier today, and it goes into effect tomorrow, Wednesday, May 12th at 12:01 a.m. And what does that mean to businesses? Well, it actually means a lot. There are a lot of changes to allowances for indoor operations as well as outdoor. So they're all on the screen. I'm just going to go through them quickly so that we can get the information out to those that are not looking at the screen. Family entertainment centers can have a 50% capacity. Amusement parks at 25% indoors and 35% outdoors. Movie theaters at 50% capacity. Food courts at the mall can be at 50% capacity. Restaurants, 50% capacity. All of these capacities are indoors. And bars at 25% capacity. This is probably the biggest impact for bars, which have had to stay closed unless they served food. Wine and breweries and distilleries can be open at 50% capacity. Places of worship increased to 50% capacity. Gyms and fitness centers at 50%. Sleepaway camps that opened on June 1st with modifications. And that's mostly related to summer camps that are available. Allowable allowances outdoors, live events at 67% capacities with modifications. It is limited to in-state visitors only. And those are all of the updates that take effect tomorrow at 12:01 a.m. And based on our criteria that was met for our county metrics. In addition to that increase to, or rollback, I should say, of restrictions, the county also rescinded our local mask order. And by rescinding the local mask order, basically what that means is that we were aligned to the state order that took effect a few weeks ago. This really distinguishes between those who are vaccinated and those who are not. There's really no change to indoor mask wearing. When you're at a public location, mask requirements will remain in place. Outdoors where you'll see the biggest impact or biggest change, those that are fully vaccinated are no longer required to wear face covering except when they're attending crowded events. Those that are unvaccinated are still required to wear face covering outdoors only when they cannot maintain the six-foot physical distancing. A reminder of just regular social etiquette. This is just common courtesy. Others may not be vaccinated or may feel more comfortable wearing face coverings, and that's okay. It still remains a good way to protect ourselves, our community, and our families. And the full order for this mask information is available on the California Department of Health website, which is linked. It's a hyperlink on the screen. It's spelled out in the much longer address up at the top of the header on this slide. Local statistics. Here I have information, and I included additional information to compare the city of San Bruno to other agencies countywide. Total cases in San Bruno as of this past Friday, May 6th, is 2,360. That's 69 new cases in the last 30 days. A slight uptick since our last 30-day report, which was reported to you at the last council meeting at 50. So it's important to remain aware and to remain cautious. Countywide, there's a total of 41,844 total cases, and that's as of yesterday, May 10th. 420 cases within the last 30 days and 568 deaths. And the color coding on the map on the screen, you could see the different shades of blue. And that shows in our vicinity, we're comparable to local agencies. Within the county, it is spread out a little bit depending agency to agency. But it is all relative within the county. On this slide, we have statistics for vaccinations. For San Bruno in particular, our vaccination rate of residents that are 16 age and older is at 75.7%. We have a range for our health equity quartile. We have about four census tracts within our city. And so that range is from 64% to 73.5% based on the different census tracts that are within our jurisdiction. Countywide, the total for 16 and older is 76.4. So up above, we're just below the county. We're at 75.7. And then for the health equity quartile, the average is 64%. So we're equal and just above depending on the census track countywide. That's also shown by imagery of dot size on the map in front of you. Vaccine clinic schedules, this still remains a critical part to our recovery. Vaccine clinics are available countywide. All Californians aged 16 and above are eligible for a vaccine. There has been discussion of that going down to the 12-year, 12- to 15-year range. That information has not yet been added within our county, but it may be forthcoming. Local appointments are available at this time to 16 and over, and most are available without appointments. And so there are opportunities. The county put together a calendar that shows all of the local vaccine clinics that are located throughout the county, as well as mass vaccination sites. They're all available on a county calendar. It's linked on the screen. It's also linked on our website. And I'm going to read it out loud just for the benefit of those that are not looking at the screen, and that's www.s7chealth.org/vaccineclinicalder. Changes to city services. So we have some operational modifications. Picnic reservations will open beginning tomorrow. Picnic areas are available at Commodore Grandi and San Bruno City Park. Some sites at City Park will remain closed due to construction of the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. And reservations must be made, excuse me, must be made at least seven days in advance. On the screen, there is a link to make those reservations at sanbruno.ca.gov/picnics. There are some rules and requirements that are included on the website. You have to show proof of identification. You have to submit payment. There are restrictions in terms of capacity that is sometimes tied to the size of the picnic site. And of course, there's the max capacity depending on what tier we are on for the Blueprint for a Safer Economy. And the library, as you know, did open for browse and go. We have current hours that are daily, Monday through Friday, and we're happy to announce that we will be expanding that to now offer Saturday hours. This will be new beginning June 5th. So we still have about a month away before this takes effect. But starting June 5th, Saturday hours will be available from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. for browse and go. Curbside pickup from 1:00 to 2:00, and 3:00 to 5:00 browse and go as well. This does not change the availability for the browse and go and the curbside pickup Monday through Friday, so those will remain the same. There's also the Recreation Center programming, the virtual programming, and the summer in-person camps that are still available, although they're not on the screen, as well as Senior Center Virtual Programming and our lunch program that still remains available. A reminder to stay connected and follow us on social media. Today, the fastest way to get information out about our change to the yellow tier was to post it on social media. And so if you're not already following us, please do so. Please sign up for our emergency alerts at smcalert. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I am available for any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer, for your presentation. And let's turn to Vice Mayor Medina, please.
Yes, thank you, Jennifer, for that report. It's great that we're really approaching, hopefully, the end of this, being in the yellow tier, and everyone still needs to be careful. The question I have for you tonight is, what portions of City Park will remain closed?
Sure. So I can get that information. They are specific picnic sites, and they are related to the proximity of the actual construction. I'm sorry, I don't have the number, the picnic number site, the site numbers, but I can get that information out.
Great. And this is for the Recreation Aquatic Center or for the project to do the paving along the baseball field side?
So that's going to depend on construction activity. So at this time, I'm going to say both, but it's really going to vary. It's going to depend.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay. Jennifer, again, thank you. And if you could stop sharing the screen, we'll bring it back to council. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll proceed on to the next item. Provide summary of the San Bruno Spring Cleanup Event. Let me see that our Recology GM is here, Kirsten Noki, and welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to take a minute to review the results from our second community cleanup event. I want to first thank the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for allowing us to utilize their parking lot for this event. This great space allowed for increased safety and allowed us to let more residents onto the property, and we therefore avoided a backup on Sneethe Lane. The event welcomed in 264 San Bruno residents from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. It was, to say the least, a huge success. We diverted 6,700 pounds of electronic waste and 8,000 pounds of paint out of the landfill. We also prevented mattresses, refrigerators, and exercise machines from potentially becoming abandoned waste. Residents absolutely utilized the opportunity to clean out their garage, side yards, attics, and contributed and contributed to the 31,000 pounds of garbage collected. Nearly 23 tons of material were totally collected. We could not have called the event a success without the help of the volunteers. We had 18 volunteers contribute their valuable time, including, but not limited to, our entire city council, mayor, city manager, and police chief. Recology employees also jumped at the chance to give back and help out. Thank you again to the city of San Bruno for their partnership with this event. Thank you.
Thank you, and we do appreciate it. Just as a point of reference, in October, when it was first held, it was 161 vehicles. So 264. And everyone was, appreciate everybody's help and lending a hand. And also to the folks at the church for allowing us that opportunity. I think logistically, it just made a lot more sense, and it was a very smooth day. And to show you that they have still wishing to be a good partner, they've reached out to the county already and said, hey, if you need a vaccination place, we're here. So they continue to always want to help, and it was, and I really want to thank everybody. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor?
I think the obvious question is, when's the next one?
Tomorrow. No, just kidding. Let me, let's throw that to Recology for right now, though I know there's not a date set, but what is...
Thank you for asking that. I think we're definitely want to have another one. I think the last one was what, in November? So I, let's look to have a discussion with staff and the next one in another six months probably or so. I think right now, twice a year is working, two very good successes, and we can only build from it. So definitely something we want to talk about.
Yeah, thank you for the question. And I think it was October 17th off the top. I was thinking last year, and of course, the date was picked because it was, normally we've done Operation Clean Sweet, so this was something in lieu of that, so that was helpful. Anything else from my colleagues?
Just a quick comment.
Yes.
To the mayor. Such a, such a successful event, it was an honor to be able to participate in it. And this was also the first opportunity I've had to be in the same physical location as all four of my colleagues on council. And I'm glad it was able to happen at such an important, community-focused event. So thanks, everyone. It was really, it was really well done.
Thank you. And yes, and not only did, it was the first time that we've all been together, and also they put us to work. So if nothing else, I want to thank again, everybody, and appreciate your updating presentation, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the next item. Item C, Announce Proclamation for Peace Officers Day. Read a little bit, and then I'm going to ask the chief to come in as well. So during May 9th to the 15th of this year is National Police Week in San Bruno. Normally, we used to have that at the mall, as you know, but obviously with COVID, that is not possible. But for some historical perspective, it's whereas in 1962, recognizing critical role that peace officers serve in keeping our communities safe and the ultimate price paid, that calling by so many. President Kennedy proclaimed May 15th to be National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the calendar week in which May 15th falls as National Police Week. And whereas there are approximately 900,000 peace officers working in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the San Bruno Police Department, and whereas, and this people may not know this, but whereas former police chief Arthur Meehan and a former San Bruno police officer, Albert Courtney, were both killed in line of duty while serving our community in 1923 and in 1924 respectfully. And whereas the peace officers of the San Bruno Police Department serve a critical role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the people of our community every day, whereas it is important for those of our community to better understand the duties, responsibilities, and challenges of their local police department, and whereas it is important for members of our police department to continuously recognize their duty to serve people courageously, safeguarding their lives and property. Whereas the city of San Bruno wishes to honor and remember the peace officers who have lost their lives in the most noble calling, both in San Bruno and beyond. Whereas the city of San Bruno wishes to convey its appreciation for the dedicated service of the members of the San Bruno Police Department and peace officers everywhere. And now therefore, have it be resolved, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, to hereby declare May 15th, 2021, to be National Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week of May 9th through the 15th to be National Police Week in honor of the peace officers who, through their courage, deeds, have paid the ultimate price in service to their communities, as well as to the families and loved ones of the fallen, and to the brave peace officers who continue to answer the calling to protect us 24 hours a day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So with that, I'll like to go over to our police chief, and I appreciate you being here this evening. And I think you know, I believe that the council very much appreciates all that are the men and women of this department and throughout that do preserve our community and safeguard. Chief?
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and to all of you members of council for taking a few moments and for sharing these kind words. Please know that they mean a great deal to the men and women, to all those who wear the uniform and go about trying to do the best work they can daily to keep us all safe. It is definitely with a heavy heart that I accept those words from you this evening. The last 24 hours have been very difficult for law enforcement family in the Bay Area. We lost Detective Luca Benedetti of the San Luis Obispo Police Department, who comes from a San Bruno family, yesterday while serving a search warrant in San Luis Obispo. He's a 13-year veteran and a detective of that department, but more importantly, a loving husband, a father of two, and again, a San Bruno family. And my heart really goes out to the sacrifice that that family has paid in that loss today. This particular one hits home for me as a very important person in my life. Early on, a field training officer and a partner of mine in San Diego lost his life a few years ago the exact same way, serving a search warrant, being shot immediately upon entering the residence. It's a reminder that it is a very dangerous job and that we need to respect the sacrifice that's made. Additionally, this morning, the Stockton Police Department, a little closer to home, lost Officer Jimmy In, a six-year veteran of the department, and yet again, even more important, a loving husband. His wife is also a member of the Stockton Police Department and leaves behind a seven-month-old and two stepchildren as well. So this week really was originally about honoring those, you know, who have paid that ultimate sacrifice. But I think that the reason the whole week was declared was in the spirit that we all look at our own families and loved ones and saying that we shouldn't only give thanks to these individuals when they're gone. We need to show some appreciation for the work they're doing while they're still here. And I think that your words and taking the time to make this proclamation have gone a long way to doing that. The last year has certainly brought forward a lot of calls for reform and difficult conversations between police and the communities they serve. But I firmly believe that the only path forward is for us to find this mutual ground of respect, where we respect the communities we serve and your wishes, and where at the same time, communities realize that the actions of a few bad actors does not spoil the whole bunch of apples. The vast majority of police officers come to work every day to do an exceedingly difficult job, and it becomes more difficult every day. And they do so under scrutiny that would cause most people to cave in their day jobs. And yet they do it, and they do it proudly. And so I really appreciate your words, and I appreciate honoring those who have paid that ultimate sacrifice, as well as those who take the risk of paying that sacrifice every day and showing up to work, including right here in our own community of San Bruno. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, for those very important remarks. And, you know, please know that the council, again, is appreciative, and I keep all of you in my thoughts and prayers as I know you have this difficult job that you do. And again, our much thanks on behalf of San Bruno. So thank you, sir. And with that, we're going to move on to item D. And that's proclaiming for Wildfire Awareness Month. We'll be bringing in our fire chief. Clearing May 2021 is Wildfire Awareness Month in San Bruno. Whereas the city of San Bruno is committed to ensuring the safety and security for those living and/or visiting our city. And whereas wildfire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas May is Wildfire Awareness Month and is dedicated to wildfire prevention and preparedness. And I'll read it because I want to hear more from our fire chief. But whereas residents of California, fire-prone communities, need to accept responsibility for living in these high-hazard areas, and whereas residents should practice home fire escape plans in every household, including with visitors, and whereas residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and the appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition. Whereas studies show that the measures taken at the home and in the area within 100 feet of it, known as the home ignition zone, have a significant impact on minimizing damage and loss. Something as simple as cleaning the immediate five-foot zone around the home can assist in making a huge difference in avoiding a catastrophic situation. Now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the city of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Wildfire Awareness Month. And I'd like to turn it over to our fire chief at this time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Thank you very much for having me speak this evening briefly in regards to Wildfire Awareness Month. Just wanted to thank Chief Johansson really quickly on behalf of all the firefighters, men and women of the San Bruno Fire Department and our relationship, and they're working with us every day in what they do. In regards to Wildfire Awareness Month, I just wanted to speak briefly about the proclamation and some of the initiatives we're working on to address the wildfire threat here in the city of San Bruno. First and foremost, I'd like to just briefly comment. We are continuing to work with the California Conservation Corps on defensible space behind the homes at the rim of the canyon, in Crestmore Canyon itself. We had the fortune of engaging, working with Caltrans, who owns a parcel of property that lies along Highway 280 between Sneethe Avenue and San Bruno Avenues. And it backs up against the homes where we're doing work adjacent to it in Crestmore Canyon as well. So Caltrans has begun a significant amount of work there to reduce the wildfire threat along Highway 280 and the rear of those residents there. We also will be, again this year, hosting a community chipping program that will start on July 12th. So please watch the city's website and the fire department's website and social media channels for updates on the locations for those chipping programs going on on July 12th. And then I'm happy to announce, just today, we were able to pick up a new fire engine, a special fire engine from Cal OES. This is what they call a Type 6 engine, and it's a wildland engine. You see here in the picture before you. And it's a specialized piece of equipment that's really meant for the tight, narrow roads and off-road areas that we have. Some of them in San Bruno and some in our region, like Crestmore Canyon, Sweeney Ridge, and other wildland areas in San Bruno, throughout San Mateo County, and throughout, obviously, the state of California. This new piece of equipment comes to San Bruno, comes to San Bruno from Cal OES at no cost to the city, and it's valued at over $250,000 for the vehicle itself. It does require us to respond on statewide emergencies, as we have always done through the statewide mutual aid system. But it's available for our use in the city of San Bruno locally on a day-to-day basis and within the county and the region as well. The San Bruno Fire Department has partnered with the city of South San Francisco, the Central County Fire Department, and the San Mateo County Consolidated Fire Department, who have all received these Type 6 wildland fire engines. It's kind of a unique opportunity to have what we call a strike team of those five-like pieces of equipment in the same exact region to respond locally for emergencies and statewide as well. And then an important part to note is that the city and county of San Francisco have also received five of these wildland engines as well. So there's a total of 10 in the region, which are really a unique piece of equipment that's specifically designed for wildland fires. So it's really great that they're here in a very close proximity to our city and the region to be able to protect the peninsula. This new engine will be housed at Station 52 on Earl Avenue. And this picture was taken today. We lined them all up. This is the Cal OES office at Mater in Sacramento. And we wanted to take a quick opportunity to recognize and thank Cal OES for that. And just our last thing for Wildfire Awareness Month is just a reminder that in late January, I briefed the council and our residents on the region-wide effort for the Zone Haven standardized evacuation platform. And the San Bruno Fire Department is going to be rolling out that platform in the coming months. And in conclusion, I'd just like to thank the city manager and the city council for their continued support for our wildfire mitigation efforts throughout San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, for that presentation and update. And I do see we have a member of our public who'd like to speak on the proclamation of Wildfire Awareness Month. City Clerk, can you?
Yes, one moment, I'm bringing him in. Jeffrey Tong? Jeffrey, I'm trying to get you unmuted.
Hello?
There you are. Hi, Jeffrey.
Hi.
Whenever you're ready.
Is this the section on wildfire? Or is this the section on, what's it called? The Brown Act? The Brown Act? Or is this a public comment for any subject?
Jeffrey, we've already done public comment, that was item three on the agenda. Right now, we are on a proclamation for Wildfire Awareness Month.
Oh, okay, my mistake.
No problem.
Sorry, bye-bye.
Okay, seeing no other hands, and chief, and I know, you know, you're thanking us, and you're thanking the manager, and all of that is appreciated. But also, I wanna thank you and Gage, because as far as in our San Mateo County, we were one of the first to get one of these vehicles. And then I guess they liked your idea and other communities, so they started saying, how about me? How about me? But I'm proud to say that thanks to your initiative and the departments by having this, and of course, it is a safeguard for our canyon and for other areas, and we have that at our available disposal. And let me tell you, you got it for a good price. So we appreciate that and having those resources available. So thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item E. Receive update on storm drain and flood protection fee ballot election process. And we'll turn that over to our city clerk, I mean, to our city attorney, I apologize.
No problem. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Just a very brief update on this. So staff and others received a question about why the names of individuals and their property addresses are listed on the stormwater fee ballot. And I just wanted to be sure that everybody knew what the answer to that question was, but most importantly, why it's the answer. So the answer is, yes, that's correct, it's required by state law. So the next question is, well, why would that be? Why is that? And so it's important to understand that elections for these certain kinds of property-related fees are different from your normal municipal or other local, state, or national elections. For example, in those elections, basically, every registered voter could vote, but these are property-related fees, so only property owners can vote. And under state law, both Prop two-eighteen and Prop twenty-six adopted by the voters in California, the, it was determined that with respect to these particular ballots, the name of the individual who's voting, that is the property owner, and the address of the property have to be on the ballot. And furthermore, that those ballots are determined to be public records. And you might wonder, well, why is that? My other ballots aren't public records. And the answer to that is that in two thousand and fourteen, the legislature adopted a new rule that specifically said that for these kinds of property owner fees and assessments, the entire ballot is a public record, both the name and the address of the property. That was determined because there were some issues about certain agencies in the state of California that were conducting these elections with what the legislature believed was improper degree of transparency. So this was an effort to make sure that both the electorate and public officials are able to understand what the results of the election are and why. So all of those ballots, including the name and address, are public records. And so the city is required to follow state law, and we do follow state law. That information was published on the ballot, that it would be a public record. And so while that is different than the other elections the city has had over the last three decades, it's been quite a while since the city adopted a property-related fee, those new laws do apply to these sorts of elections for property-related fees. So I hope that answers everyone's question, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from, for many of you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, thank you, city attorney.
You're very welcome.